Here we have Position Four. Linwood City Council is seated up here. And I thank you all very much for coming. So at this point, we will begin with opening statements. Mr. Amuzaghar, would you please introduce yourself to the group and give us your opening statement?
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you all for coming and caring about our community together. Wow, this is just really exciting as I look around the room. It just feels electric being a part of this campaign. My name is Ashkan Amuzaghar, and I'm seeking the privilege of serving you as City Council Position Number Four. I'd like to begin by thanking Linda and Teresa for the generous invitation and opportunity to be here this evening. I'd also like to thank those who have inspired my campaign: community leaders Michelle McGrath, Wally Webster, Mayor Smith. And I'd also like to thank the existing council who have opened the pathways for us to be here this evening. Thank you. Tonight is an opportunity to see us, to hear us, and to get to know us better. Our time together is an invitation to lean in, be curious, and ask questions, as we all work toward a common goal of improving our city and creating the community we want to live in. I have been asking myself and my communities some questions for a while now. How did we get here? Can we find ways to bridge gaps between us on politics and the community itself? How do we engage our neighbors who have become strangers? Can we do that even while holding passionate disagreement on deep contrasting convictions? It was those questions and Mayor Smith's call to action for up-and-coming future leaders to step forward that motivated me to run. Secondly, I'm running for better and more broad representation of our community. Currently, the council has only one person of color, and we need a place at the table, and I will be that fresh voice. Lastly, I'm excited. It's a new decade. Light rail is coming. It's a transformative time to influence and shape our future. I currently serve as a Commissioner on the City's Diversity and Inclusion Commission, and I'm working on a county initiative to have our first Pride Park celebration in 2020. I have been endorsed by Mayor Smith, Mayor Franklin of Everett, Senator Solomon, Senator Leas, Representative Cindy Ruh, Councilwoman Christine Frisell. My name is Ashkan Amuzaghar, and I'm seeking the privilege of serving you for City Council Position Number Four.
You were doing so great earlier. So hi there, folks. Good evening. My name is Dio Dahtubusigas, but I just go by Dio. So if you see me later on in the room over there, just call me Dio. Well, the reason why I'm running is because in 2015, I moved here so I could go to the University of Washington, of which I graduated last year. And the one thing that I love about Linwood, that I loved about Linwood, is that it's a community, it's a very family-oriented community. That's what really turned me on to running for City Council, because what I see happening, unfortunately, is that slowly but surely, that sort of community aspect is going away. You know, we're being outtaxed. You see it in Seattle, people who've lived there for generations, for some 50 years. They're eventually being priced out. And I've been canvassing, that's why you see the tan here, I've been canvassing nonstop pretty much every day for the past month or so. And I've been getting those concerns from citizens. And we need to ensure that the people who build Linwood are able to stay in Linwood, and that the people who are coming into Linwood in the next few years or so are going to be able to find an area that's welcoming and welcoming to them so that they too can feel a part of the community that we've established here, that was founded well over 50 years ago. And as a member of the City Council, I will ensure that we will do exactly that. Thank you.
Thank you. Opening statement to Ms. Lashgari, please.
Good evening. Welcome, and thank you all for being here on a weeknight. I'm Nas Lashgari, running for the City Council Position Number Four. I'm here running for this position because of my commitment to my community and for the love of Linwood. I have lived in the Puget Sound area for the last 40 years, and Linwood is my home. My commitment to Linwood began when I joined the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Commission as a minority woman and a member of the LGBTQ community, and I have been serving the city of Linwood as the Vice Chair of this commission since 2017. I am a graduate of University of Washington with a Bachelor of Science degree. I have over 20 years of professional experience in the field of dentistry as a business manager and human resources manager in healthcare. I also have over 10 years of experience in international humanitarian assistance to women and children in underdeveloped countries. I speak three languages fluently: French, English, and Farsi. I would like to be elected as your City Council because Linwood is growing rapidly, and I want to be proactive in managing that growth so we can continue to be a safe, livable, and welcoming city where all are welcome. I believe the city of Linwood, under Mayor Smith's leadership, has done a great job of planning for the next five years. I support the strategic plan of the city of Linwood, which is the community's vision. My top priorities are being proactive in the management of growth, ensure financial stability and economic success, and continue to be a safe, welcoming, and livable city where all are welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Opening statement to Mr. Rutherford, please.
Well, good evening. Of course, I'm Jim Rutherford, and I want to welcome all you. I appreciate you being here. I've been here in the city of Linwood since 1968. As you might say, I've lived here for 50 years. I grew up in the city when there wasn't anything here. The streets out here, Scriber Lake Road and all down were gravel. In 1976, my wife became a City Councilperson for 20 years. And of course, with Irving on the City Council, I was involved quite a bit. The history of this city is one of the favorite things I have here, because our main street at one time was Harvey 99 and 196th. And I don't know if any of you around here don't remember Jimbo's. He's no longer here, but that was one of the main stages of the city. I'm concerned with things here in the city. I'm concerned about the growth, what we're going to do with traffic when light rail comes, and the low income for our people. And I'm committed to this city, because I've lived here for so long. And I'm committed to you. Not saying that I can do things, but I can sure as heck try to get the rest of the council to agree to what I would like them to do. So with that in mind, keep me in mind when you're voting, because I'm going to vote for you out there as a person.
Thank you. Opening statement to Mr. Smith, please.
Thank you. Well, I'll see if I can make this in my two minutes. Since we only have two minutes, I wanted to mention about how about 10 years ago, talking about community involvement, we were left in Linwood without a chamber. And at that time, I thought that I wanted to be involved, and that's the time when I started the Linwood Chamber. So thank you very much for continuing on with what we've been doing initially 10 years ago. On a personal level, I'm married to Sherry. I have three daughters, Jamie, Ashley, and Becky, along with a stepdaughter Jennifer, and finally, two grandchildren. And I've been a longtime resident of Linwood. For community involvement, I have been, it takes time, effort, to really know and understand the culture of our community. I've been chairman of the Snohomish County Board of Health, the Disability Board, Parks and Recreation. I was a state president for the Washington Pilots Association, which also gave me the opportunity to do some wonderful things, such as being a member of Air, Washington Air Search and Rescue, and Angel Flight. I've been a member of Rotary, Junior Achievement Instructor, Linwood Festival, when we had a big, we used to have a big parade in downtown Linwood. I've been on the South County Court Advisory Board member, longtime member of Trinity Lutheran Church, not because, I'm not trying to preach my things, but I wanted to mention it because we are very welcoming, and that's where my background comes in. We welcome everybody. We have a slaying at Trinity that all means all. As well, I've been very active in our neighbors in need, participating there. Also, many times, I've been part of providing the breakfast, paying for it. I did it for my birthday. I said, what a better way to, what a great thing to do is to buy a bunch of food for our neighbors in need and go ahead and do that. But there's a lot of important items that we have to do in Linwood: taxes, homelessness on the street, and, thank you. And I'll tell you the third one later.
We will also have closing statements, so if there's a really important part you didn't get to say, we're going to have a chance to do it at the end. And just as a reminder, I know it's hard sometimes, but we do need to make sure that we follow Tracy's signs, and the reason for that is everybody gets equal time, and the Chamber and Linwood today were very committed to having a fair forum here. So I know it's hard, because we have things we want to share, but I thank you so much for watching the signs. Mr. Busigas, how do I do? Oh, thank you. The first question is going to you. If you received a $1 million grant to use for the city in any way you wanted, what would you do with it and why?
That's a great question. Two things that I would do. One of the things in which I'm committed to doing is ensuring that our infrastructure and roads are prepared for the incoming traffic that Snohomish County and Linwood are going to be having in the next few years. I think we're expected to receive about 15,000 new residents in Snohomish County as a whole. Secondly, what I'd like to do is, because our city is growing, we have to ensure that we install green spaces in the community. I like to follow the Savannah, Georgia model, where in Savannah, Georgia, they have a park or a green space every few or so city blocks. And so what I'd like to do, just to make sure that our community is livable, is to have these green spaces and, of course, to do our infrastructure improvements, which are very, very sorely needed. If you go along some of the roads here in Linwood, potholes galore. So that's something that I think we really ought to improve. Thank you.
Ms. Lashgari, question for you. What do you believe to be the top three pressing concerns to businesses in Linwood?
Top three concerns?
Yes, the top three pressing concerns to businesses.
I think safety is very important for our city, and I think a lot of the businesses are growing. With the population growing, businesses are also flourishing. I have heard about some concerns with the light rail coming and some of the roadwork that needs to be happening. There are some businesses that are concerned about how it's going to affect their businesses. But I think eventually, while these things get done, all businesses will be flourishing. So there might be some time that it's going to be a hard time adjusting with all the roadwork going around it, but that's what I think would be the concern.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rutherford, do you feel there is waste in the city budget? If so, please cite specific areas where you would reduce funding.
I believe that the budget needs to be revised. I think most of the budget, it's all put in general fund and is distributed how they want to spend it. There's not enough budgeting per area: police department, fire department, in the city hall. They've got too much employment in certain areas, and I would go in and look into reducing employment in one area and increase it in another. Businesses are suffering because of some of the shortages. So that's what I would do, is go in and take a strong look at the budget to make sure that everything is funded properly and with enough personnel to do the job.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, how do you propose to address mental health issues in Linwood? Yes. How do you propose to address mental health issues in Linwood?
That's an interesting question, because so often, we see homeless on the street, people that are street people, and quite often, they're considered mentally ill. There is a percentage of them that are. But the overwhelming problem that we do have in Linwood with these street people is an alcohol and a drug problem. I've seen it firsthand, and dealt again with the neighbors in need, but also with the Operation Sack Lunch down in Seattle. And the problem that we have with overdosing, with people that look like they're crazy, I guess if you're into drugs, maybe you are a little bit crazy, and we need to deal with that. Be able to give them someplace to go if they have a problem, they're willing to do it. Right now, it's very difficult for someone that wants to get off drugs to find a facility or some program where they can go ahead and not, and get in it right away without being clean.
Thank you very much. Mr. Amuzaghar, if you received a $1 million grant to use for the city in any way you wanted, what would you do with it and why?
Thank you for that question. Seems like $1 million is a lot of money, but when we're talking about city budgets, that doesn't always go very far. The first thing I would do is leverage and review the mayor's strategic plan and find the area with the most need. Who are the most vulnerable people in our community and the most vulnerable areas that need our help? Then we can start addressing and allocating those dollars. So first, we would need to take a review and a poll of who needs the money the most. How can we make those dollars stretch? We have a fortress balance sheet in the city currently that's allowed us to reinvest money and to make money off of money. So $1 million, I would recommend that we direct that towards one of the biggest issues in our city: housing.
Thank you. Mr. Busigas. It's hard to keep track.
Hey, you got it.
I know. I got this. This is great. What do you believe to be the top three pressing concerns to businesses in Linwood?
Yeah, so one of the things on which I'm running is lowering the sales tax. Right now, the Linwood sales tax is 3.9% and combined with, sorry, 4%, and combined with that of Washington State's sales tax, it's 10.5%. It's nuts. It's crazy. And it's not competitive with the rest of the other cities in the area. Shoreline has theirs at 3.7%, I believe. Mount Lake Terrace has theirs at 3.9. Edmonds at 3.9. And so what I'd like to do, what I want to do is I want to lower the sales tax at least to 3.6, 3.7. That way, we can ensure that the businesses are able to stay afloat and that they're not wanting to take their businesses elsewhere. It's imperative that we keep our small businesses here in Linwood. And another issue is homelessness. I work at the Linwood Fred Meyer on 196th, and I see, you know, homeless, you know, who have mental issues. They walk into the store, and it's unfortunate, and it's a problem for the community.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lashgari, do you feel there is waste in the city budget? If so, please cite specific areas where you would reduce funding.
Since I've been serving the city of Linwood as the Vice Chair of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, I've had the honor of attending many of the city meetings. And from what I understand, the city of Linwood's financial status is very good. We are doing very good at the city, and the budget and everything seems to be balanced. So I really don't see any problem with the budget at the city.
Thank you. Mr. Rutherford, how do you propose to address mental health issues in Linwood?
Like Jim Smith said, that's a very interesting question. There needs to be facilities out there to take and invite these people in. And although the facility would be out there, most of them, or several, won't go to the facility because they don't want to be taken care of. Mainly, I'd take and get out and invite as many as I possibly could to get to this facility, and give them the medical treatment they need, and give them a certain time to get straightened and to be released from the facility.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, what do you believe to be the top three pressing concerns to businesses in Linwood?
Oh, I'm glad you asked, since I didn't finish before, and it was my fault. But the three biggest issues, of course, are the high taxes. Dio, we agree on that quite a bit. The impending traffic disaster going to have with the light rail coming into town, it's really going to be a problem. Linwood residents are going to suffer for the light rail coming here. It's great for Edmonds. It is great for Mount Lake Terrace. It is great for all the other surrounding communities. But Linwood's going to have gridlock that we've never seen before. And this is, we've had traffic problems forever in Linwood, and it's going to be totally off the charts. And the third one, of course, is, again, the homelessness, the traffic disaster, and then backing off of the maximum taxes that we have here in Linwood. Those are the three areas.
Thank you. Mr. Amuzaghar, do you feel, I'm going to mix them up now, do you feel, we're going to move on to this one, how do you propose to address mental health issues in Linwood?
Thank you. Linda, my last name is pronounced Amuzaghar. Amuzaghar.
Amuzaghar.
Thank you.
Thank you for correcting me.
It's okay. It's okay. We're all here to learn tonight, so it's to get to know each other. So let's answer the question. How do we address mental health issues in our community? This is a tremendous issue that is impacting not just our community, but communities across our country. Oftentimes, mental health issues stem from behavioral and addiction issues. I propose a three-point plan. The first step in that plan is engagement. We need to engage the key players in our community: emergency medical responders, social services, our housing partners. Who are the key people that impact our mental and drug epidemic issues in our community? Second, I propose naloxone and medical assistant treatment programs to be available to our first responders to reduce overdose deaths. Thirdly, I propose to remove housing barriers to address health, behavioral, and dependency issues in our community.
Thank you. Mr. Busigas, do you feel there is waste in the city budget? If so, please cite specific areas where you would reduce funding.
Great question. I believe that taxes are necessary for the health of the civil society, but we also have to ensure that the money that we're, taxpayers' money is being well-used. I was just looking at the budget just the other day, and I was looking at the, what is it? The, I think it's our defense lawyers, the defense lawyer budget or prosecuting office. And we spend $600,000 on that. $600,000 for one attorney, or is it $600,000 for one office? That's not very clear, but if it's just for one attorney, we have to make sure that we spend a little bit less on that. $600,000 for one attorney is just too darn much. And so what I want to do is I want to go through the budget, see what else that we can spend less on, or if there needs to be cuts, if something needs to be cut. Because I'm all about making sure that the city spends the money that we're taxed on efficiently and effectively. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lashgari, if you received a $1 million grant to use for the city in any way you wanted, what would you do with it and why?
I would discuss it with the mayor and the City Council to get their opinion on what needs the most. But personally, I would think that the police department and fire department could always use extra help for safety of our residents. So I would help in hiring another social worker for the police department to help with issues that we are facing in our city with the homeless and the drug issues. And also, maybe I would help the fire department with that fund so that we make sure the residents of our city are safer.
Thank you. Mr. Rutherford, what do you believe to be the top three pressing concerns to businesses in Linwood?
Well, I think the top three, one is growth, and that growth is going to give the businesses more business. I think traffic is one of the biggest ones, and I think the drug issue and the homeless. So that's basically my feelings.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, do you feel there is waste in the city budget? If so, please cite specific areas where you would reduce funding.
Well, it's an interesting question, and I'm glad that we had a couple people answer it before I did. Well, it's not so much a matter of waste as much as prioritization. Public safety has to be number one. Since we now have a South County Fire, I think police is the one that would be number one for the city of Linwood. We need to be putting more into enforcement. I appreciate the desire to have more social workers, but if we don't have enough police officers, like, as I understand it, there's like only two, sometimes there's only two cars on the road on some mornings, and I think we need to be able to have that police enforcement to keep all of us safe, because if we're not safe, what's the use of living here? So I would say that again, prioritization would be the most important thing. Another thing would be planning. I understand we need to, our planning department is taking sometimes months and years to get okayed on some of the permits. I've got to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Amuzaghar, am I getting better? I'm not there yet, am I?
You're doing great.
Thank you. I'm trying awfully hard. What do you believe to be the top three pressing concerns to businesses in Linwood?
Thank you for that question. Business owners are residents of Linwood as well. I don't believe that the concerns of our business owners and businesses are mutually exclusive from the concerns of us as well. I believe that our businesses may be concerned with the same things that we are here in this room: managing growth and what comes with growth, the good and the other side, economic gains, increased or decreased traffic. Will I be able to get to my favorite coffee shop once we start growing? Will it be shut down due to construction? Will they be able to be open? Secondly, another concern of businesses is the living wage movement, living wage ordinances versus earned income tax credits for people in our community. Lastly, I believe that our businesses are also concerned about safety. We do have a rise of mental and behavioral addiction issues in our community, and the safety of our customers and the people that frequent our businesses are of concern as well.
Thank you very much. So we are now to the closing statements, where we have one minute to do that, and I thank you all for your thoughtful answers. So we are going to begin with Ms. Lashgari. Gari, you know what? That one I knew. Ms. Lashgari, could you please give us your one-minute closing statement?
As a woman in leadership position with management experience, I bring in the maturity of working in collaboration with different viewpoints and a cross-cultural understanding of our diverse community. I understand the importance of being proactive in managing the growth of our city so we don't end up like Seattle. City Council Position Four is a crowded position with six candidates running for the same spot. It is very important that you vote on August 6th and vote for me, because I'm committed to be living in a thriving and growing city while we maintain the residential aspect of our city. The growth of our city is exciting, but for some, change is challenging, and it is important to manage this growth responsibly for all residents. With my professional and personal background, I will bring in a new perspective that will contribute greatly to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Rutherford, your one-minute closing statement, please.
I can sit up here and tell you, I'm going to do this for you, but unless I'm on the council and get the agreement of all the other council people, I can't do a thing. So it's up to you to put me or either one of these folks on the seat and hope they do a good job. I've been around Sinlinwood for a long time, and I've seen it grow from gravel streets to a golf course. to, to a golf course, to the mall, and I've been involved with all of it at some point or another. I've coached baseball here, I've coached basketball, football, and I've been involved in the community for a long time. I've been a business owner and I've been in management, military management. So folks, I'm here for you and for the businesses in the Linwood.
Thank you very much. Mr. Smith, please, your one-minute closing statement.
Yeah, Mr. Rutherford and I agreed earlier that for the primary, we're going to vote for Jim.
Thank you.
I was, that was his joke to me earlier, sorry. I was born in Seattle and was fortunate to have been able to travel with my family as a child, eventually returning to Snohomish County. I graduated Edmonds High School, received two bachelor degrees from Central Washington University here at the Linwood campus, and then continued on living in the community for decades here. The, our campaign is, is taking a stand. We're not going to be having any of the plastic signs out there. We're committed to have a, ditching the plastic feels fantastic, so, and each sign, plastic sign is about 480 straws, so let that sink in a little bit. Three items is the street homelessness and drug use, impending traffic disaster, backing off of the maxed-out Linwood taxes. Those are the three areas that we're going to have. When elected, I'll bring local experience and drive to the position.
Thank you very much. I'm so scared. Mr. Amazigar, I'm just going to get, why don't you just introduce yourself again?
You can just call me Ash Khan.
Can I call you Ash Khan? I don't know why it's so hard for me, but could we have your one-minute closing statement, please?
Well, I was going to ask if I could, if he was going to shorten his, if I could take his time and add it to mine, but that's okay. Okay, we'll go ahead and get started officially, all right. So, closing statements for this evening. Since 1998, I've been an organizational leader in the banking industry. I'm focused on the issues facing our community, affordable housing, youth homelessness, increased noise pollution due to the new airport, and it all comes down to one word, a place even, Linwood. Think of a bicycle wheel. Linwood is at the center, the hub, with all of the spokes speeding into that center. Those spokes are our issues. Bicycle and pedestrian safety, effective growth management, human services, arts and culture. Once we understand how interconnected our issues are, just like how we are interconnected in here as a community, then the wheel turns. We move Linwood forward together. Before tonight, I asked my rabbi for some wisdom on how to be a successful public servant and he shared four things. Love your community, serve your community, remember this is a privilege, not a title, and tell the truth. My goal tonight was to take steps towards trusting me to be your voice. I hope I've earned some of that trust tonight. My name is Ash Khan Amuzigar and I'm running for city council position number four.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bustigas, may we have your one-minute closing statement, please?
I'll be quite honest with you folks, I'm a political novice. This is my first time running for city council. I've only lived in Linwood for four years, but I've lived pretty much all over the West Coast. I've lived in northern and southern California, the tri-cities, in eastern Washington, Vancouver, Washington, and of course, now Linwood, Washington. But by far, this is probably the most, my most favorite place to live. And the reason why is that sense of community that we have. And I want to make sure that we preserve that community. You know, I've learned from California that high taxes is, are, it's just going to change the face of our community. It's not, we're going to price out people who've been here for years and years and I don't want that to happen. I want Linwood to be the wholesome family community that it is right now. And that's the reason why I came here and the reason why, that even though I don't have the most experience, I'm the youngest of all the candidates running, why you should vote for me on August 6th and then August primary for Linwood City Council, position four. Thanks a lot, everyone.
Thank you. I want to thank all the candidates for position four. We appreciate you being here and we again, appreciate your thoughtful answers and bringing us some information about what you believe is truly important and thank you. At this point, we are going to excuse position four.